So this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. The Town of Hingham is recording this as is Harbor Media. If anyone else is planning to record the meeting, could you just use the raise hand function? Okay, seeing none. We will, oh, I also wanted to note that I'm Carrie Neen, the Chair of the School Committee, and I'm participating remotely along with my colleagues, Michelle Eyre, Jen Benham, Ness Corenti, Carlos De Silva, Tim Dempsey, and Liza O'Reilly. So next we have approval of minutes. It says the minutes of the School Committee Planning Workshop held on October 18th, 2021. I think they should just be the minutes of the School Committee, correct? So I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting held on October 18th, 2021.
I'll second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. So, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Aye.
Tim? Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. So the minutes are approved. Number three is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the School Committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand or use the raise hand function. State in when you're unmuted, state your name and address, and address your comments to the Chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the School Committee. As established by Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibility of the School Committee are to, one, select and evaluate the Superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the School Committee. The School Committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that, if anyone is planning to make a public comment, could you just use the raise hand function? And we will have, it will unmute. Okay, not seeing anything. So we'll move on to number four, which is the Superintendent's Report. Gary?
Good evening, everyone. Just got a couple of items to report on tonight. Just want to give an update on our COVID numbers for last week.
Sorry, sorry, just sorry to interrupt. I see Jenna Manto has her hand up, and she's the reporter with the Hingham Journal. So just to let everyone know, she's recording this meeting, so, sorry.
Right. It's all set. So we had a very good week last week. Our numbers that were submitted to the Department of Education on Friday across the district were zero, so we had zero reported cases in the Hingham Public Schools last week. So that's a positive step for the district. Moving on to our COVID data that we're collecting on students, actually, the MIS database that the state is keeping up to date, we're actually creating a link between the district student information system and a program called SNAP. We've experienced a delay in that process, and I know that's somewhat of a disappointment for me because we were expecting to report on that information tonight. We had a couple of days last week that put us behind because we lost power, and we didn't have any staff in our building. So I'm anticipating that we would have that data in the next couple of days. As soon as it's available, I will inform the School Committee. I will send that information. And shortly after, I share it with the School Committee. I will share it with our schools and then with the general community at large. So that's something that'll work with the Chair on, on getting that information out. We were somewhat disappointed that we couldn't get everything complete for today. It's a two-week onboarding process with the organization that we're working with. We did experience some delays and some communication issues even today. So we're working on that. I'm not happy that we're at this position where we don't have that information, but at this point, we're working with all the vendors involved to try to make sure that we can get this information accurate to the School Committee and to the community at large. I think our schools, primarily the high school, would like to know, and we'll have that information out as soon as we possibly can. And that is something that I wanted to show the School Committee. I talked to the Chair of the School Committee earlier tonight to express my displeasure with us not having it. But again, we will make sure that that information is made available to School Committee first, our schools, and then we'll hand it out, we'll get it out to the general community in some level of correspondence. So that will be forthcoming, and I just want to let the School Committee know that that's where we are. The next item that I have to report on, and I will send that along with this report to the School Committee, I'll send a report that is relative to the quantity of testing data that we have regarding test and stay and also pool testing. So we've had a number, we've had a significant number of students that have gone through that protocol, either the test and stay and/or the the, slipping my mind here, the pool testing. We'll have that available for you as well. So that report will come out to School Committee as well. We're, we're running behind here. Last, like I said, a couple of days, we're trying to make, make up for it in the, in the early part of this week. So we'll get that out to everybody. I will report on the strategic plan under that item later on in the agenda. So that's where we are. Chairperson Neen, that we are somewhat delayed, but we'll, we'll, we'll get caught up here.
Great, thank you. And that's good news that we were at zero for COVID numbers. Does anyone have any questions? Okay?
Just, just one, one last piece, if I could. We do have the testing overall numbers. If I could, through you, Chairperson Neen, if I could turn it over to Dr. LaBella White, he's, he's more than, well, more than
Okay, that's great. Yeah, here, I'll unmute him.
Great, good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Masis mentioned, we do have some dashboard data from our testing with CIC. To date, we have administered 1,085 tests. Of the 1,085 tests, eight have been reported as positive, with 1,072 reported as negative.
That's great. Good news. Okay, well, thank you for that. Okay, so we'll move on to communications. I think, Michelle, you had one?
I did, yes, thank you. Just thinking about all the trials and tribulations that the entire community went through last week with that storm that's still not named, that we all had to, had to go through, and I know various people have had different experiences. But I had sent a quick note to, to Katie Hartman and Doug Foley, just saying that I wanted to give them a quick note with a heartfelt thank you to them and their staff for all they did for the storm cleanup to get the students and staff back into the schools. I had sort of made a note that, you know, this year has not been the return to normal that everyone had hoped for and sort of been planning for. But I think what we do know, at least in Hingham, is that we are really fortunate to have such dedicated staff, from teachers and faculty and nurses and custodians and bus drivers and central office staff, just everyone who does so much every day on behalf of the students. So I just wanted to let folks know that I had sent that communication out, and, and it, it didn't, it did not go unnoticed by me that both Katie and Doug were very glad to see the message, and they just, you know, sort of made me realize that, you know, our custodial and maintenance staff probably don't get the kudos that they so often deserve. This district could not run as smoothly as it does without all of their hard work, and I just wanted to be sure that, and I know this committee appreciates it, and I just wanted to put it out there at this meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, they, they do incredible work, and it was definitely highlighted during this past storm. And just while we're thanking people, also, the Hingham Municipal Light Plant and the Department of Public Works, their, their trucks are still out there cleaning up from all of this, so, but they got the schools up and running and
Absolutely.
ahead of some of the other schools in their area. Gary?
Yeah, you know what? Carrie, thank you for mentioning Hingham Power and Light. They, they did a tremendous job, and I'll tell you, they, they were in touch with me quite frequently. I'd also like to highlight John Ferris, our Business Administrator, because he was active, you know, trying to get our crews out to just clear, you know, clear sidewalks, clear anything we could to be able to have safe passage to school. You know, my concern this time of the year is, you know, we, we have a long season, weather season, ahead of us, and here we are, two, two, two snow days or two weather days, and that puts us two days into our, our end of the year ad for, for school day. So I think we were able to get our schools open and running. It took a lot of people to actually do that. So to your point, very grateful for the diligence of the workforce and municipal force here in Hingham to actually get our schools up and running. Schools were, were very jealous over Hingham's ability to actually run school on Friday because most communities around us could not do it, and the area superintendents were sending me messages telling me that they're very envious over the ability for Hingham to get their own power to schools in a timely manner. So thank you so much for bringing that up.
That's great.
I think Can we pile on the thank yous, Carrie? I've heard, I've heard from many parents who with, most usually when we hear from parents about communication, it's negative. I think a lot of parents were really impressed with the communication that went out throughout this crisis that we had last week. So I know both the specific email, a lot of people commented with one about the bus routes, but also the email to the staff, and a lot of good communication went out during this, and I think parents noticed.
Well, it's going to get better.
Well, no, it's great, the communication particularly about the buses, and also, Carrie, sorry, because I know you wanted me to mention this as well, to Patrick Cunningham and his team as well. I mean, that was a Herculean task to drive through this town and figure out what roads are open and what could not be, and I'm sure that there were bus drivers who were stopping all over town to pick children up. So thank you for, to them too, for all they did.
And Michelle, the, the chart that went out to parents telling them what roads to avoid was developed by Patrick because he actually went out and drove the roads. He sent the information to John. John sent it to me, but it started with him. His diligence and attention to detail for us to actually get that out in a timely manner was, was spot on, and I really appreciate that on, on his department behalf.
Really? We have some great, great people working in the district. So we'll move on to 6.1, which is update on the superintendent search process. Liza, do you want to take us through that?
Sure. So on Friday was our deadline for applications for the at-large member for the screening committee, and we had five applications. And starting on tomorrow, the School Committee's meeting in the afternoon, and we will be reviewing those applications and hopefully determining who the at-large member will be. We've had a number of people lined up for the screening committee. Jamie LaBella will be representing Central Office. Jen Hendrickson, the Assistant Principal at Hingham High School, will be representing the principals. Heather Sullivan, an eighth grade English teacher who's been with the district for 25 years, will represent the teachers. Carol Perez will, a Metco Director, will represent the directors. And the PTO Presidents had informed me that we should know the two parent appointments from them either tonight or tomorrow, so we should have that before we meet. And I followed up with the Town Administrator on the public officials, so hopefully we will get that. And then, then we will also have a student on the screening committee, and we, the Student Advisory Committee is being established this week, so we can figure that one out. That shouldn't have an influence on the selection of the at-large member. But, so we're proceeding with the screening committee on schedule, and we also closed the comments on the candidate profile. We had over 50 people fill out our survey, and a number of the staff also commented. So we will talk about that tomorrow as well. For the committee's information in the shared folder for the meeting tomorrow, I shared with you the, all the screening committee members' information, and also I took this, I gave you the comments from the survey on the candidate's profile. I took a stab at updating the candidate profile based on the general comments of reading through all the survey comments and what the leadership team and others had added. There were a few issues that rose to the top and were key and just needed to tweak the language in the candidate profile. There's not a lot of dramatic changes, but we can talk about that tomorrow. Tuesday, November 9th is the deadline for applications, and as Dex said, they are trickling in, and they've had some contacts with people, so they're, and there's always a rush at the last minute for sending those in. So we're not worried about that for next week. And so we're, we're on time as, as we go.
Great, and thank you for all your work on this. Next is 6.2, an update on the strategic plan process. Gary?
Yes. Hold on one second. Pull it up on my screen. So I just want to give everyone an update. We put an RFP out on the state website to gain some level of attention on the RFP, or request for proposal, for the strategic planning process for the Hingham Public Schools. I'm happy to announce that the Teaching Learning Alliance from Wilbury, Massachusetts, has been selected to be the facilitator for the process. We had a short call today. We'll be meeting next week, the 10th, to put together a timeline of activities. But it will take us, you know, we talked today that our desire is to try to have a framework of a strategic plan by, you know, May to June, and the facilitators thought that we could achieve that, but it's going to be very rigorous. We're going to be looking for a number of, you know, input, stakeholder input sessions that will advertise to the community. There will be a survey that will go out to the community. We're also going to be working with members of the School Department, School Committee, to actually form the Strategic Planning Development Committee that will do all the legwork in compiling information to assemble the strategic plan. So information will be going out to those, you know, constituent groups, stakeholder groups in the days to come. But our parents in the near future are going to look forward to, you know, stakeholder focus group sessions that'll probably be an hour and a half that will start in January, and right before that, or maybe shortly after that, we'll be doing a district-wide survey for district, different constituents, from alumni all the way to, you know, staff members, faculty members, parents, grandparents, residents, so that we can begin to understand through data what the beliefs and strengths, opportunities are, are out there in the community so we can assemble our plan for, for June. So we're happy to be working with this group. They have a great deal of experience around strategic plan development, and they have a great deal of, of comfort that they can help us meet our timeline for early June for framework and publication end of June. So we feel, we feel really good, and I'll bring more information to the School Committee. Every single School Committee meeting that we have in the form of my update, or we can actually just add a strategic plan update, might be more appropriate, just to keep it separate, so that everyone can have an idea of where we're going and what particular benchmarks we achieve and where stakeholder groups can actually have the opportunity to participate because that information for us is extremely important. So that's the update that I have, and I'm glad that we actually are beginning the process.
Yeah. And I love to hear that we're asking alumni for input too, especially the recent ones have a lot. Does anyone, does anyone have any questions on this? Okay, seeing none. So we'll move on to new business, 7.1, acceptance of donation of a new sign for Chase Field at PRS. Who would be speaking to that?
I will.
Okay.
Good evening again, everyone. I had the distinct opportunity to meet with a Hingham resident by the name of Bill Quinn. Bill is a graduate of the class of 1961. He was a classmate of Lieutenant Kurt Chase. Kurt Chase was a Vietnam veteran or fatality of Vietnam, and that's, Chase Field is actually named after the, the graduate of 1961. And Mr. Quinn came to me because they are preparing for a reunion, and they would like to raise funds to build a sign for Plymouth River Elementary School. He came to visit with me, a very compelling story, he's a very close friend, and, you know, it, it's a testament to the will and the commitment of the, the graduates and the classmates of, of Mr. Chase, Lieutenant Chase. So what I have presented for you this evening is a couple of renderings of the sign. You know, Mr. Quinn has his preference of the two signs, but he wanted to give the School Committee an idea of what they were thinking. They will raise all the money to actually have the sign built and erected for the school, but they wanted to bring it in front of me so I can get it in front of you for discussion and potential approval. So as you can see in the attachments tonight, the sign has been, you know, rendered that no fundraising has taken place at all. So this is all concept to this point, but they did seek out a potential vendor to be able to actually construct the sign. And if you take a look at the, the two drawings or renderings that, that he did submit, the, the front of the sign will have Plymouth River School, excuse me, Plymouth River Elementary School with the Chase, Chase Field, and High Street with 200 High Street, and the second one is Plymouth River Elementary School, Chase Field with just 200, signifying that that's 200 High Street. The back of the sign will be the gift, gift of the class of 1961, of Hingham High School class of 1961. So that is the overall premise of the donation. If you take a look at the rendering, there are also a number of features of the sign, details of the sign, but it is something that Mr. Quinn was very articulate and very passionate about having the opportunity to not only remember a classmate who made significant contributions to the class and to the country, but also would help with, you know, a beautification project for the school and just really highlighting the school with the sign. So with that said, Carrie, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, and I'll try to answer any questions you, you may have.
Okay, yeah, the, the letter in the packet that Bill Quinn wrote about his friends was very moving.
Very much.
Does anyone have any questions or comments, thoughts on this? Michelle?
Carrie, do you know, is there, because I know there, there's a preference for one of this over the others. Is there anything in the, like, town bylaws or the fire department or any municipal ones that require that sign to say 200 High Street, or could it just say? Do we know, or is something we can check?
Yeah, it, it doesn't, there isn't a specific bylaw that identifies that it has to identify High Street. The, the sign preference is the second sign, the second or option B, because it did identify Chase Field in white, and he thought it might stand out more to the community if it was white. So that was his preference, you know, but again, he was just concerned that he would present options to the School Committee so that you would have choice.
Yeah. Liza?
Where is this sign going, right, on the, because it, I'm in favor of doing this, I'm, and I actually like be better, so let me put it that way, like, and the message was extremely moving, and I was glad to read about a real Hingham hero too. So I will start with that before I get picky about this. But when I look at the sign, it has the, the top molding on it, and so I'm a little confused as to, like, where this is actually going. Because of the shape of it, is it compared to the size of our other schools?
Yeah, I believe it would go on, you know, near the road, facing the street. I can, you know, if, if the school, yeah, the School Committee would like me to, you know, get more information from Mr. Quinn on what his thought was. I do believe he talked to Principal Lamoth regarding the sign and placement, but I, I, we did not get into that detail when I did have that conversation with him.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I would just, I'm all in favor of doing something. I just want to understand, it's a little hard from this design of
Yes.
where it's going and in relation to, or, you know, what was there before, but I'm, and I don't mind that Chase Field is in white and distinguished because that'll be helpful if, for any youth programs or anyone else that uses the field, to make sure that REC actually also uses that name for that field. I think we should reinforce that as well. Nice. So that would be my question is
Michelle?
Just because I live across the street from Plymouth River, but it is, there's a sign there now that looks exactly like that in the front of the school facing this like right, like way before the tenors. So there's a sign up there now, and it just does not say Chase. And it's actually interesting because I did notice last time I walked by, I was like, oh, that sign is getting very faded. It definitely needs to be replaced. So, okay, this is great.
So it's almost a replica of what's there.
Yeah, you know what? I, I sent a message to the principal, and you know what? I don't recall if Mr. Quinn was specific to replace that sign. I think his conversation may have started with that. I was very compelled with him and his story, and he stayed in the office for a while, and we, we had a great connection, but I can clarify that. Again, keep in mind that there's a significant amount of fundraising that has to take place before this actually comes into play, and they were thinking that they would do this at the beginning of next school year. They just didn't want to do anything without the approval of the School Committee prior to them getting moving.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments on this? I mean, I'm in favor of it, and I liked, I liked the one with the white lettering as well. But so what, what do you need from us tonight? Do, is consensus enough? Do we need to vote on it, or?
Well, I think it probably would be good to have a vote to demonstrate that you're accepting a gift, because this is technically a gift over $5,000.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll give it a try. I make a motion for the Sure, I'll give it a try. I make a motion for the school committee to accept the. Gift of a donation of a proposed new sign. Naming Plymouth River School Chase Fields.
Thank goodness. All in favor, Michelle? Carlos? Liza? And I'm an I as well. The gift is accepted and thank you very much to everyone who's taking on the fundraising and putting this together. Seven point two is to discuss a proposed model UN field trip to in January of twenty twenty-two and act as appropriate. Who who will be speaking to that one?
Hello, this is Captain Black. I'm sorry, hi, hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for putting this item on the agenda. This. This field trip, which I can certainly answer questions about, is one that we've taken many times before with students, usually about a dozen. Excuse me, about two dozen students. And this year, I'm seeking approval again to to attend this. This conference in in Boston hosted by Harvard University for three nights. And I think given that it is back in person. The item was put on the agenda just to answer any questions. So if anyone has any questions about about this conference. That club members attend. So this is voluntary group of students that that choose to go as delegates to Model United Nations.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on this?
I happened to be having a weekend away a few years ago at the Sheraton in Boston at the same time. Hello, students.
Crowded, very crowded.
It's a very long way for the Starbucks in the.
Yeah, it looks like a great trip. So I would take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Model UN field trip to in January of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, all in favor, Michelle? Jen? Carlos? Liza? And I'm an I as well, so. Good luck with the field trip.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
You can advance for the dates.
Seven point three is to discuss a proposed grade eight field trip to Washington DC in May-June of twenty twenty-two and act as appropriate.
The principal Smith will present that tonight and thank you for joining us, Derek.
My pleasure. Thanks so much. It's it's really great to be here. It's exciting to be talking about bringing this trip back. It's a trip we've done for several years. I'm joined by Mark McCullough, a grade eight class advisor who really does the. Lion share of the work and getting this trip together, but we're hoping we can get this back on the books this year. It's a trip that's open to all eighth grade students. It's kind of a rite of passage, you know. The the civics connection to the curriculum is wonderful, but also the opportunity to travel. And have students be on their own for a bit, we feel is is very valuable. So. We're hoping that we can get this up and running again for this year. It'd be the very end of May, beginning of June. It with four days, three nights in both DC and Philadelphia.
Great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this happening again too. And so will this trip, I have two questions. Will this trip be? That sort of second generation of this trip of, I see you're going to Gettysburg, so it'll be similar to what happened in. Two thousand nineteen, I guess it was.
Yeah, we're actually going to do it in reverse. Given that we're now discussing eighth grade is now civics generated, civics oriented. We're going to start where the constitution was written, then discuss where the constitution was fought over. Then go to DC and see where it's supposedly in action now and then come home. Honestly, these are eighth graders. I could take them to Bill Ricker and as long as they had their phones and their friends, I don't think they care. I'm going to enjoy Gettysburg. So if I don't come back, that's where I am.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, this is this is a trip we do really well. We're traveling with the same company that we've traveled with for years and we have a good relationship with them.
I would be in favor of having a vaccination requirement for people attending the trip. I didn't see any reference to that except for adherence to COVID nineteen related protocols. The other travel trips that we've approved, including the just the last one. I'll include the vaccination requirement. Is that something that's been discussed with the trip operator?
The trip operator will follow our lead. I was, I didn't put it down because I didn't know where we would be on May thirty first. And this is November first. I thought, you know, I'm willing to follow whatever lead you want me to follow on this. I'm vaccinated. I suspect that most of the teachers who would be chaperoning are vaccinated. So I can't, I don't have a reason to say no. I just didn't put it down because we're traveling on May thirty first and. Today is November first. I had no idea where we would be in in the scope of all this stuff.
If vaccination is a requirement, if that standard operating operating procedure, the middle certainly adhere to whatever the other. Trips similar to this are doing. You know, as as Mark said, it was not on our radar, but we we haven't really rolled this out to parents yet. So. That would be important for us to know as we prepare to bring parents in and talk about the logistics of the trip.
I know there, we've been talking about several overnight trips. I wonder if it makes sense to have a policy committee discussion just about overnight trips and vaccinations. If we want to make this a larger policy, not just about the eighth grade trip.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Tim. Jen, did you have something?
Yes, I would. Had a question regarding. Insurance. Is there travel cancellation insurance?
Yes, there is. It's available through grade classroom, a number of different levels. And the company who last time when we had to cancel DC gave back. Gave Hingham parents eighty percent back as opposed to most towns were getting sixty percent back from the other vendors that they were dealing with. So this is a company that we have a well-established relationship with. The only thought I had about vaccination status is about the people who've already had it. And you know, if they've chosen, if they've already gotten the antibodies, I don't know what the policy should be. I'm just throwing it out there. Is there going to, is that something you should include in your discussions? And I don't, I didn't buy a dog in the fight either way. I'm just throwing it out there for to put in your discussions.
I think everything else, we, all the other trips have shown that you have to prove vaccination. I, you know, Harvard is doing it for the Model UN. The theaters are doing it for the New York City drama trip. Europe, you have to do it for the governments. So. And I would assume too, I mean, eighth graders are of the age that they can get vaccinated now. So I would have my fingers crossed that many of them already would be. So and then I guess Derek, are you still going to run the civics program here for those students that don't attend? So there's.
One of one of the one of the strengths of this this week, we call it civics week. It's it's not just about the trip to DC. Because there are are students and families who wish not to travel. We we plan really high level engaging activities for the kids who remain back here in Hingham. All connected to civics, the constitution, what it means to be a a good citizen. We have great speakers who come into the middle school. We have great local trips. And we make sure that any student who wants to access either program, whether it be the trip out of state or the local trips. Have the ability to do so regardless of financial means. So. We will continue to do things as we've done over the past several years.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Right, just two things. The one thing, Liza, you just, what you were just saying about the vaccine status, that is one thing just to think about. Is that some of the places may require that you have a vaccine to enter, like, you know what I mean? So you don't want to get there, be like, whoops. Ten of the kids don't have it. So now we got a problem. And then the only other thought I had for a question was, and I don't know if this is. If this form is a policy or a procedure, but I always notice this, at the very top it says, no. And I'm not saying I don't want to approve it, I'm just saying, can we take that off the form if?
So Michelle, I believe that's there because Paula Gerard McCann did not want students taking field trips that late in the year. It was always a high school thing and not a middle school thing. Mark actually brought that up to me earlier. We've never had, we've never hesitated taking trips at that point in the year. What we tend to avoid is the MCAS testing window. I think the high school was more concerned with. Field trip, uh, field trips during final exam period or as we're leading up to the end of the year. So that's for you to discuss, but I want you to know the middle school. There's no problem taking a trip. We've done this trip at this point in the year for several years now.
And actually pushing it back a couple of days is making it better for the kids because there'll be fewer trips happening. It's usually the first. Two weeks of June, specifically the second week. Where you're just, Washington DC is awash with eighth graders. If we go a little bit earlier, we might have a little bit more access to things. So.
It looks like a good trip.
I have an eighth grader and I can assure you that he and his friends have already been talking about this trip for weeks, so.
And don't tell them about Bill Ricker.
Okay, so Jen, do you want to maybe add the the add this to the next policy agenda, the vaccination thing? But for now, it sounds like it's probably a good idea to require it to keep it in line with the other field trips and also just practically. So they don't get to Gettysburg and find out they can't go in because they're not vaccinated or something. All right, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed eighth grade field trip to Philadelphia, Gettysburg and Washington DC. May thirty first through June third with a requirement for vaccination status or vaccines.
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor, Michelle? Jen? Carlos? Liza? And I'm an I as well. So good luck with the planning process for the rest of the trip.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, seven point four is to receive a homeschool application for a student in grade four and act as appropriate. That application is in the packet. And it's been approved by Dr. Mestus. Did you want to?
This application has been submitted and does meet the requirements set forth by the Hingham School Committee and I recommend approval.
Thank you. All right, any questions? I'll take a motion.
Based on Dr. Mestus's recommendation, I make a motion to approve the homeschool application for the student in grade four. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Michelle? Carlos? Liza? And I'm an I as well. Number eight is subcommittee and project reports and warrants signed. So we'll go, Michelle, do you want to start?
Sure, I have an update from the building committee. We are actively meeting pretty much every Wednesday now. We, at our last meeting last Wednesday, we approved the, we approved for submission, the ed plan. Dr. LeBillaud and Jennifer Arnold worked diligently on to put together for foster school to be submitted to the MSBA. And a big thank you to Dr. Jamie. The MSBA mentioned, or not the MSBA, sorry, the architect said it was one of the best ed plans they've seen. It was really well done. So it will go a long way in getting us what we need at foster school. So thank you. I know it's a lot of work. So the building committee certainly appreciates it, that went into that. And we're going to be, we've got some preliminary design things going on and we are going to be. Rolling out hopefully very soon a website and more communications around the foster building because it is going into high gear now. And so to keep the community informed. So more more to come on that for this committee and then for the public to see as well. The Gary and I will be meeting on Wednesday with the Metco families for our monthly Metco family meeting. The CPAC a couple of weeks ago and I didn't make it to the meeting, but it was a really great presentation done on dyslexia. And it was, I know Carrie and Tim, you were there as parents. I did look through the presentation and it was just. So full of great information. So really, they did a great job putting that together. And then Liza made mention before about the student advisory committee that's being formed at Hingham High School. That is something that Massachusetts law puts out that school committee should have a student advisory committee made up of. By students who are duly elected by their peers. Happening tomorrow at Hingham High School. The applications to be on the ballot were due Friday. And the election is tomorrow. So if there's any parents on the call who have high school students, please remind them to vote tomorrow. So as soon as that committee is named, we'll, I'll schedule to meet them for, so the. Call is that the school committee and the student advisory council should meet at least. Every other month during the school year. So we'll schedule something, maybe hopefully for maybe mid to late Jan, uh, November with this group. And get started.
That's great. Looking forward to getting some more student voices in this and some of these decisions.
Yes. And just so they, the process will be that once that five member committee is established. Then that committee votes for a chair and the chair is the we is the school committee rep, the student rep to the school committee. And sorry, and then just so people know, because I think it's very exciting. Each of the students is, well, they're going to pair up and they'll each cover. There's going to be a student, one student for each grade represented, and then one grade will obviously have two students. Because there's five students on the on the council. And then the one of the students will, they'll each cover a grade level. Be like meeting with the principal at the elementary schools to talk to them and hear from students at all the different levels. So it won't just be high school voices that we hear. It'll be from across the district. So it's ambitious, but the kids are really excited about the opportunity.
Yeah, that's great.
We had our policy subcommittee meeting last Tuesday. To go over the therapy animal policy, we, which is in draft form and. We, before we bring it to our first read, it's just a stone draft form. We've asked Dr. Mestus to. Share it with the counseling department and on building principles. We will continue to work on that and when then I will schedule after next meeting, I will get our next policy. Meeting and we will work on vaccination. For travel.
Great, thank you. Ness?
I have a couple of things. So you have warrants in your packet. As far as the finance subcommittee meeting, meet, the subcommittee goes and then east, we had to postpone because of the weather. We were scheduled to meet last Wednesday, so we're meeting next Monday. And then in your packet, I put in two update forms for the sustainability budget task force. As you know, we have the task force that was formed through the town. The, there are six members on this task force, myself, John Ferris. Liz Klein is the chair. She's the select board member and she's also the chair of this committee. We've got Dr. Mestus on it. Michelle Moncengier and Donna Smallwood. Donna is a former advisory committee member. Oh, thank you. And then in addition to these task force members, we've got three, three advisory committee liaisons on there. They're not members, they're just part, they're just listening in so that they. members. They're just part, they're just listening in so that they understand where we are headed as far as town goes. Um, and just to remind everybody, this is a um town department was, the, the, the charge was set by the um town meeting. And it was prior to the pandemic, town departments were seeing an increased demand for services that were difficult to address with the available revenue. In response, town began developing a long-term financial management plan to identify new sources of revenue, assess service needs and prioritize capital and infrastructure investment while being mindful of the impact on taxpayers. Um, so we have been meeting since the beginning of September. Um, and I'll go through the packet there. So the task force was formed to assess the future needs and explore revenue opportunities, um including potential operational override to balance out the school twenty-three through twenty-seven. Um, and go to the next slide. This one is, uh, we are looking for feedback from the public. So it's on the select board website and we have received some to date, but I would strongly advise people to get in um feedback, whatever you want to put in there. Um, we, we go through every week when we meet. Uh, you can find it by going on to the select board website. There's the sustainable budget task force link and in that link, there are a few things in there. It basically tells the members of the task force. Um, it talks about what the charge is and then there's a link to their response um to the feedback form. Uh, okay. So the next slide, the timeline. Uh, this just shows what the normal budget process is, that middle paragraph shows what the normal budget task uh processes. And then the one on the right is the sustainability budget task force where we are in our process and what we expect to be doing. Um, we started in September, as I mentioned, we're continuing our work in October, November and December. We anticipate having our findings paired for the middle of January, which will then feed into the town's process of um budget hearings. All right. So if you can go through progress to date. Um, so we've had weekly meetings since uh September tenth, we have every member there. Um, we meet every Thursday. We had the one joint session with the select board, school committee and AdCom back on September fourteenth. Um, the feedback and reporting out process, um, it basically just defines what, what our task is. And um, the preliminary discussion. So the next few things are what we have been discussing. Uh, we've been discussing the large impact items and benchmarking towns. We've been talking about the ARPA use of funds, the SRA use of funds and large capital projects. And then the potential impact on the debt schedule. Um, and our progress to date, um, we talked about new growth opportunities. Uh, we talked about the split rate scenario, which is something that is discussed every year, but that just looks at the different rates between the residential and commercial and whether it makes sense to continue to have that be the same, um, which is what we do now or make that different. Um, and we've seen that our benchmark towns, it's, it's half and half split as far as half of the towns that we look to for our benchmark towns um have the same rate and half of them have different rates. We're looking at that. We're also looking at um the analysis of fees and revolving funds and grants. And we're looking at both the municipal side and the school side of things. Uh, looking at new non-tax revenue opportunities and um budget growth rates. And when we do all this work, we're looking at our benchmark towns um to see what they're doing. I dove into a bunch of financial data for our benchmark towns just to see if they have different kinds of non-tax revenues um that they are benefiting from that we, we do not yet. Um, and Liz has been working on that as well on the municipal side, having discussions with people. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. Um, we'll have an update every month and what, what we'll do is Liz will present to the select board. Uh, I think she's decided mid-month and then once she reads out to the select board, then I will continue to read out to the school committee.
Great. Thank you very much, Liza. Did you?
Yeah, no, I have a question and I wanted to share something. Uh, when you're looking at budget growth rates and benchmark towns, are you taking into consideration overrides that they've had?
Yes, we're looking at override specifically. Yep.
Okay. Um, and then I wanted to share with the committee, I did share with Ness and asked her to share with this sustainable task force. Um, published in the most recent issue, November, December of the Harvard Alumni Magazine, there was an article um called optimizing public school spending. And it is about research that um Professor Peter Blair, who's at the Harvard Ed School, has done on local public school spending. Um, and it's research that's been done multi-years nationwide that shows that um households are willing to have higher taxes to fund better schools. And I will share this with everyone. I'll post it on my school committee Facebook page. Um, but it basically, the, the research shows that your property value increases based on the investment in your schools and particularly investment in your teachers. The numbers of teachers you have lowering your student teacher ratios, um, what you pay your teachers and that the taxpayer can relate to that and seize that value in that investment. Um, so I specifically sent this to Ness because I felt that this is real research, data-driven evidence of what we have been saying for years that there's value in your property value when the schools are performing well and delivering. Um, so I want everyone to know about that. I will email it to all of you and also have Ness share that. Um, but this is very recent data that is pretty extensive research too.
That's great. Thank you. And, and Ness, I can put a link to that, um, to the feedback form um on the Hingham Public Schools Facebook page too, to get it up to families. I mean, I think it's one of the things, correct me if I'm wrong. One of the things that I thought you were looking at is looking at what the expect, expectations of the town are as well um for services provided. So um, that might be something there's, there's what do we want and what do we need? And then how are we going to pay for it? It's like, there are two questions. Is that, is that right?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I would say that we've heard from um a large part of the people that we've heard from so far are parents. So it's, it's good news. Um.
Yeah, definitely. It's great work. Thank you. Michelle?
Um, just curious, Ness, um, what are some of the non-tax revenue opportunities that other towns are doing? Do you have any that like popped out or related to sort of?
Yeah, the lot, uh, if you can believe Wellesley, so that was one of the things that I was doing. Wellesley um gets a million dollars in just parking fees, which was really interesting to see. Um, but we've got to balance that with what would happen with our downtown because we don't want to hurt them either. So we're discussing those kinds of things. And then Canton was really interesting. They had farm and, and um they have like planes coming in and out, I suspect because of some of the revenue that they have going in there. So some of this, some of the towns don't make sense for us to compare to, but it was interesting.
Right. Yeah. No, that's a great, that's actually a good example though, because I mean, it does sort of quit, like what, one, right? Do you want to pay for parking downtown or would you rather just uh, oh, it's, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money spread across all the households. You know what I mean? It's like, would you rather have, what's the offset?
Right. And then, and Gary had been presenting on like solar. Um, a lot of towns are having solar arrays and winter, wind um powered, you know, revenue. So we're looking into that as well.
That's great. All right. Well, thank you. Um, so Carlos, did you have something? No, okay. All right. Um, so next we're, actually you're up, Carlos. Do you have anything?
I do. As a matter of fact, uh, thank you. A good segue at talking about solar power, right? Uh, just want to.
Any opportunity.
Yep. No, that's a great source of revenue, Michelle. I mean, if we really, you know, pursue that route, uh, we can actually raise up to uh, a million dollars or more. You know, we know the planet is, has done it. Uh, I, I think they are raising over seven million dollars if I'm wrong. I know Marshfield raises over a million dollars. Uh, so the uh Hingham Climate Action Planning Committee met uh once and we had planned a meeting uh last week due to the storm, we couldn't meet. Yeah, you know, ironic enough that kind of climate change is affecting us right here, right? So um, we are meeting this Wednesday. Uh, at the last meeting, we created seven uh subcommittees. Uh, that will be dealing with the, the Hingham Greenhouse Gas Reduction Initiative Working Group, Energy Infrastructure Working Group, Hingham Community Engagement Working Group, Regional Engagement, uh, dealing with the, you know, the districts around us. So we can actually compare to see what they've been doing. Uh, that's part of our, our plan as well. Uh, Residential Net Zero Working Group, uh, that we've seen coming, coming up with effective ways of uh generating power uh through uh other sources. Uh, and uh, we also have a group that will be writing a grant to, so we can pursue our you know, work. Um, it's, there's a lot of work uh planned ahead. Uh, the thing is, our time is very limited. So we have been meeting very, very often. Uh, even the subcommittee is a, a meeting every other week. Uh, so uh, the goal there is actually to get the ball rolling. We don't think that um this will be ready. Uh, the requirements will be ready by town meeting uh of next year. Uh, and that's not part of the plan, but we want to make sure that we have part of the requirements in place. And uh, some of ours actually belong, uh, belongs to the uh, the building uh task force. Uh, will be, you know, you'll be seeing some of us representing either the Hingham Climate Action Planning Committee or Net Zero at some of your meetings at Foster and also the Safe Building.
Yeah.
I also, uh, so that's pretty much what's going on. We are meeting this Wednesday again to go over. I wanted to give Dr. Mestus and uh Mr. Ferris the heads up that some of us uh on behalf of the Hingham Climate and Action Planning Committee will be reaching out uh to you and and requesting uh information, perhaps data. I know that some people have already met with you in the past, talking about it now. Uh, different things. Uh, so if you get an email from me or other individuals asking for data, uh, if you could just help us out, that would be greatly appreciated. What we're trying to do is to consolidate our asks so that way we don't have seven different individuals going to John or to Dr. Mestus asking for things that are very similar to one another. So we're trying to make sure that uh we, we, we go, you know, we, we know who's asking what and who. Because we have to go through the other departments to see what the other departments are trying to do to be more effective. Uh, reducing, uh, you know, uh, gas emissions and so on and so forth. So uh, just, just a heads up that we'll be in, in contact with you. So that's that for the Hingham Climate Action Planning Committee. I'm repeating that so we can memorize that name so long. Um, but also uh this Wednesday, uh, we'll be meeting um at the South School uh Council. Uh, that was also supposed to happen last week, so it didn't happen because of the weather. Uh, so it has been rescheduled. They uh continue uh to address uh the um new uh fiscal year uh school uh improvement plan. So we'll be doing that this Wednesday and that's pretty much it. Thank you. And uh, by the way, I'll be attending the uh, the conference uh as a delegate representing the school committee uh involved in those beautiful resolutions and that's happened this Saturday. I, for some reason, thought it was Friday, but uh it is Saturday down the Cape. So um, you know, too bad the weather won't be so nice. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carlos. Uh, Tim, do you have anything? No.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, Liza, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, the wellness subcommittee will meet again on November ninth. And salary negotiations, we meet tomorrow as I talked about earlier. And then um salary negotiations is meeting again on November tenth with the HEA Unit A. Um, and then for the middle school, the, their first school council meeting was held October twenty-fifth. I wasn't able to attend as I, I had a conflict with another um meeting. Um, and then I also wanted to note to the community that on Wednesday, the half day, November third, it is Red Bandana Day at um, the Hingham Middle School for the One Book, One School Day of Learning. Um, they, this year, the school has a, a one book for the whole school read, The Red Bandana, which is the story of Wells Crowther, who was a B C alum who was a hero on nine eleven. And the school chose the book because of the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven that occurred this year. And so they have all school activities planned and then also a fun run that ties into the B C's, the Boston College's Red Bandana Run and they're encouraging, it's a one mile run walk for everybody to participate in. So that is a great activity for the school to look forward to, especially on the, the half day. So I wanted to make sure people knew about that. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I will reach out to Ness and Tim to schedule curriculum and PRS School Council is meeting, I believe, November eighth. So I'll do, date the committee and then I'll also be attending the M A S C conference um later this week. And I think Michelle and Ness are, are going to be attending virtually too. They're doing a hybrid version this year. So, so we'll report back to everyone after that. So um, has anyone else? Oh, now we're forty-eight hours. So we do have uh an item here. It's to discuss the purchase of a bus and act as appropriate. John, do you want to talk about that?
I'm gonna take off.
Okay.
Camera.
All right. Thanks, Ness.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, the um, the, we, the transportation department, we've been uh struggling to try to keep up with the volume of um, of special ed transportation, um, having a difficult time uh getting equipment this year, but um even more importantly, the um vendors, uh, they can't seem to find workers and help and stuff. So the vendors are uh coming up um empty when we're sort of looking for uh, for routes and we have more routes than what we know what to do with. So we have been looking for equipment and we've liked uh checked with the lighthouse group to see if um, it seems to be, you know, everybody's heard about the driver shortages and the labor shortages. We do have a supply of drivers, um, subs for the most part that Patrick has um, sort of recruited and, and become available so that we can continue our fleet and, and moving forward. So we've been looking for vehicles. We can't buy them because the, the wait's too long. There's no new vehicles. There's no used vehicles out there. Any kind of timeframe would be looking forward be hitting us um sometime like in the summer of twenty-two when we, when we inquire about, you know, when we'd be able to get vehicles. So what we did do was we reached out to the lighthouse group. That's a, a group of business managers and said, hey, does anybody have vans that um, you're not using because you can't find your drivers and with the hope of that we may be able to lease from them. Um, you know, Cohasset had one there, but then all of a sudden that one fell through. Middleborough had a couple and then you know, you call them to follow up on that and then say, oh, yeah, we actually got a couple of drivers. You hear a rumor about uh North Adams having some vans and you call up and you find out those are the ones that they have on surplus that are no longer really usable for the, for the most part. Um, so we, we've uh checked with North River Transportation to see if maybe, hey, they're short drivers and we might be able to use their vans. So we have not been able to get any vans whatsoever. To, in addition to our fleet, and that's really so that we can provide the transportation to the students because our contractors cannot. So it's been very, very difficult. Patrick did find an opportunity to um, you know, buy a van. And it just so happens that the van is, is um, available through a company that's partially owned by Ness. Um, and you know, that's uh, the name of the company is, um, excuse me while I get my glasses on here so I get this correct. The Fleet First Inc. And in order to, because of the nesting in on the school committee, in order to um, let us go forward to buy this van, we're talking about, there's a, there's a bus available. It's not a van. It's a twenty-person, um, two thousand eight GMC twenty. let us go forward to buy this V and we're talking about, there's a, there's a bus available. It's not a V and it's a 20 person, um, 2008 GMC 20 passenger bus. It's operational, operational. It works. Patrick knows a way that we can actually utilize this bus so we can free up a piece of transportation. The cost of the bus is $7,000, um, which basically for runs is, is cheap money and we can put the bus to good service and stuff. And we'll, we'll be able to provide the service to the students. Um, so in order, since Ness sits on the school committee, in order to do that, there, you know, instead of talking about a perceived conflict of interest, we've talked with the attorney, uh, John Co- uh, Coughlin to find out how we go about doing this so that, um, you know, the, we could actually purchase this van and get our hands on it. This is something, if the, you know, as we were going through this, I'd say any possibility aside from using this van, just because you understand there's a conflict of interest. But we really are sort of desperate for vehicles. We did lose another van too temporarily because it, it, we got into an accident. Um, the driver, uh, there was no students on board, but they, the, the driver did get, um, you know, sent to the hospital checkout. She's fine. However, there's some aches and pains that, uh, that go along with it. But more importantly, the van has significant damage to it. Um, you know, somewhere to the tune of $10,000 and now waiting for parts to get that fixed. Um, so the, the long and short of this message is that we're desperate for vans and the, we have some boat language here. If you would, um, school committee would approve to allow us to, um, buy this van from Ness's company for what I believe is a reasonable price and, you know, a completely arms length transaction. If the school committee were to approve, then tomorrow night, the same vote or a vote similar, perhaps different language, we'd go to the select board so that they can approve it and then we could sort of move forward to purchase this van.
That's right. And it, it looks like their vote would be to accept Ness's, uh, conflict of interest disclosure form too.
That's what I would expect, Carrie. Yes. You know, uh, John Coffin would phrase their votes. I, I, I can't possibly try to phrase their votes because there's a lot longer sometimes, but, um, yeah, that would be it so that they understand, hey, this has been a full disclosure. This is an arms length transaction. Everything is, um, you know, uh, is, is beneficial to the town. And, you know, I, I would, um, appreciate if the school committee would in fact make the motion and, and approve this van because we can use any piece of equipment we can get.
And I'll, I'll just note, I, I called the, um, Massachusetts Ethics Commission today just to make sure because we don't want to have any perceived conflict of interest and she recommended a form to be filed with the town clerk. So the rest of us have, have done that. Um, to make sure that it's transparent and everyone, you know, understands this. And it, it sounds like you've done a lot of work to avoid having to do this. So, um,
Yeah. I'd like to mention one more thing. So, i- and even, you know, even with this being, I, I would like, you know, Patrick Cunningham, I mean, we talked about him earlier. But he really is an excellent leader. Um, and, and we provide transportation at lower costs than any vendor we can possibly get. Um, you know, and, 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 and that's a good thing. And that includes, you know, sort of like taking some cost of our vehicles as well. And then we provide a better service and then the, the, the community is much, uh, happier knowing that it's us doing it as opposed to a contractor. So, um, you know, I, I say we have, we have additional needs, you know, and I, I hope that, you know, as we proceed in the budget process is that we grow his fleet a little bit because as much as this person should take on and the much as we can do cost effectively, we probably should because we have a good track record now. Transportation is doing phenomenal since he took over in 2016 with the leases of the buses and he's just an amazing leader and able to get a lot done.
Yeah, he really does excellent work and it's, it saves the district a lot of substantial amount of money too, which is great. All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this?
Uh, Liza, the Michelle. Oh, um, so question, how did we find this and why is this a 48 hour issue? Like, how did it come up that we discovered this van, or this bus is available for sale?
Pat- Patrick, Patrick, um, had told me about this. Geez, Liza, this could have been, um, a month or two ago. It, it could have been a month ago. I forget. Um, you know, it, it's, uh, the, the, they both use, um, I know Fleet First uses All Make, who's our mechanic and we use All Make. So, you know, I mean, through, through talking and stuff and I, I do know Patrick does know Joe Correnti as well. Okay. So they, they do have dialogue and Patrick came to me. Um, I think it was a month ago. It was like, we were all together at, at Ness's and I knew that Joe was going to look for something, um, but, um, Patrick had mentioned to this, you know, shortly thereafter saying, hey, he got these vehicles and they're in good shape because we've been looking for vehicles because we can't get vehicles. So, um, you know, I think that's how it came to the attention. And as I was saying, early on, it's like, let's find something else. Is there other thing we can do? Let's lease. Let's try to do something. So we avoid any perception of a conflict. And when, when everything that I did failed, 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 failed. And when we lost another vehicle, I mean, even this vehicle, we were waiting for the adjusted to come in. I said, Patrick, can you just get it into the shop? We'll deal with the adjuster later. Let's just get it fixed and let's get it repaired so we can get it back on the road. So, you know, we were going through that and, and it did get into the shop, but now it's waiting for parts. So it's, it's one of those points here where, you know, if there's a, uh, an act of like, let's go forward. Let's, you know, there's no, there's no conflict of interest here. This is legitimate. The price is fear. This is a piece of equipment we can use and I think it's necessary to bring to the open to say, let's get this V and let's get this bus so that we can provide this transportation of these students.
Okay. I, I understand the need. I just, uh, it, I'm concerned about the rush. I'm of this process. Um, so I, I was knee deep in working on a lot of stuff this afternoon and then I got the email. I had to fill out a disclosure and add this to the agenda and I, I, it's, I, I just don't understand why this is 48 hours.
Well, I can appreciate that certainly, Liza. And why it's 48 hours is that's what the town, like, we, we had talked about it, the disclosure got filed. And I think the town started talking about it with attorney and with Joe. And really on Friday, that's when Tom, um, Mayo said, hey, John, you know, Joe would be willing to sign this if you could do a vote through the school committee. So, I mean, I was willing to go forward and see if we could do this under 48 hour because, you know, our next opportunity will be November 16th and we, and then, then the board of select has to do their vote. So Tom basically said, if you can get there, but we'll stick it on the, the be it select board agenda for Tuesday. So that's why I brought it here to, to try to expedite it to the extent we can, because otherwise we'd wait till November 16th and we're going to get delayed, you know, it will be in December. Eventually we'll get it. No new equipment's going to show up for us between now and then. But, um, it's, it's more of, uh, a point that we wanted to provide service to as many kids as we can. And there's a waiting list and, um, Suzanne Venice is on, she can attest to that.
It, it sounds, yeah, okay. It sounds like in the cycle of our routine to every two week meetings, by the time the lawyers came through with what needed to be done, that would seem to be the delay. So, um, that I can understand that. Thank you.
Michelle, just.
Yes, thanks for that, um, raising that point, Liza, and for that explanation, John, because I had sort of had the same thought as, why are we rushing this? But it sounds like this has been something that, that, the procurement of van is not so much being rushed. Like that's been being, you've been trying to work on getting a van for months and then this came up a while ago, but the disclosure language that has to be dealt with. So thanks for that, um, clarification. So my one question was, because I know you were said you were looking initially for a van rather than a small bus. Would the, what would the price be if you had been purchasing a used van versus this? Like, is, is the price pretty comparable?
Yeah, the, the used vans that go for a lot, a lot of money. I mean, it depends. This is a 2008 vehicle and it's available. Right. And that's where we, we opted for this, right? If you wanted to get, I mean, some of them are going for incredible prices like, you know, $19,000, $18,000. When we first started buying these escapes, the first year they were 19,000, the next year they were 26,000. You know, and, and now you can't even get them. So, um,
No, that's helpful.
And even if it's a short term, uh, Michelle, this is a good, you know, even if it's a short term of a $7,000. You know, and he'll employ it. I mean, to the extent we keep going next year, he'll continue to employ it. And, uh, I'll make things. It's in good shape. So I think we can get plenty of service out of it too. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a worthy investment.
Okay. Thanks. I just, that's, I just wanted to clarify that it's not that buying a small bus is costing us more than buying a van. So I just wanted to make sure that was, um, the case. Um, okay. Thank you.
I was thinking, Michelle, even if I could get a V and I might lease, oh, what do you want? 300 a month for it? I mean, you know, and I would have leased the van for 300 a month. So now I'm paying 3,600 just for a year. Um, I'm not saying that I wanted to do this. I would have preferred.
Right, right.
You know, and, and basically I would have preferred, hey, how many do you have? Can you give me two? Can you give me three? Because we can satisfy all of them. You know, we've got a good line of subs going. Patrick is constantly, constant, uh, form of recruitment. And, you know, every run we can get, we can provide the service to our kids and, and get them there safely and, um, and do it cost effectively.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I'm with you. I mean, I get, I, I guess I'm thinking too. I mean, we have an obligation to provide transportation, right? So, um, we have to make that happen as best we can. So sometimes it's not always, you know, the easiest way to do it, but it's going to be done. So thanks, John.
Carlos, did you have something?
I do. Uh, I true, uh, you know, have, uh, had the concerns of, uh, you know, why we introduced this on the 48 hours. I understand that we, uh, it was a shortage of, of used cars out here. Uh, and thank you, Carrie, for, uh, you know, cross checking with the State Ethics Commission and, and for John, you know, John speaking with the town council. Um, I don't think that we have a practice of, uh, purchasing, uh, equipment and, uh, service from s- special employees. Uh, I just, I wanted to be careful not, so we don't set a precedent here moving forward and uh, you know, right now, I guess we are having issues in, in getting cars. Uh, and you already checked, so that's fine. Um, and the other thing too is, you know, under 48 hours, I, I usually like to see things that happen because of an, an emergency. Um, I guess there's issues, uh, with, with bus shortages, cut, you know, auto shortages. Uh, John, I don't see this on the, um, on the agenda for tomorrow at the town meeting. Um, posted, so you may want to double check that as well. Uh, because I don't see anything as, as it is right now. Um, so just if you, if you hoping to have this voted tomorrow night, uh, they need to, uh, look at that. Um, I don't see an amendment.
Right. They may do it under a 48 hour item as well, Carlos. I mean, in my, in my dialogue with Tom, I thought that's what they said they would do if we, if, if the school committee were to pass it.
Yeah, I spoke with Joe earlier today and he was planning to bring it to the select board tomorrow night too. And they're assuming we vote on it today. Because if we, if we don't, then we'll have to wait. Um, Jen?
Um, just one question, John. It's popped in my head when you were mentioning the lease, you know, leasing and, um, how long do you anticipate? I know, I know, of course the ball, but how long this vehicle will, um, will give us, will give us two years, three years, four years?
Um, I think it, I think, I think two's easy, probably three, probably more. It depends. So Patrick's going to, you know, uh, employ this one to free up another special ed van. So it'll more likely be used locally and stuff. So we'll certainly, you know, get more mileage so that we can free up, you know, another piece of equipment and, and take it to a further distance. You know, we're using, we're using our spares. We're using the ones we declared surplus that we haven't done yet. You know, we put a little money into repair for them. So, you know, we're using all the equipment that we have available. So this one here, I mean, you know, two, three, um, and there's, there's, you know, we'll, we could also, the surplus vehicles are going crazy, right? Remember the Chevy that you declared surplus? The town got $3,200 for that. It didn't run. So, I mean, these are just the sort of things that are happening. I, 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 I can't describe it anymore except for the way I am. And I know it's like, you know, I find it mind boggling, but I just don't know what to say about these things, you know?
All right. That pays for half of this bus.
Although that goes right to the town, Liza, right? There it is, you know, and I mean, here it is, that scrap and it went for $3,200.
Okay. Does, are there any other questions or comments from the committee? All right. I see one hand up. Helen Lee, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and if you have a question or comment.
Sorry. Experiencing some of the, um, you know, now the connection. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
We can hear you. Could you just say your name and address for the record?
Helen B. I'm actually with the host family by Cushion Street and, um, currently caring families in between towns in Boston as well in the South Shore. I just have a quick comment and, um, updates about curriculum. I know that diversity curriculum.
Sorry, sorry, Helen, we're, we're, we have to stick to our agenda tonight and we're discussing the purchase of a, of a van.
Okay, okay.
If you want to come to a future meeting.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Before I forgot.
Yeah, no, okay. If you, you can email us or if you want to, um, come to a future meeting and we have a public comment period in the very beginning. So yeah, you're welcome to, um, to share your thoughts then or to reach out to any of us. Would love to hear your thoughts. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
I will send the email about the, um, curriculum of diversity studies and athleticism studies.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, um, for the, uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
Um, yeah, I can do it. I will make the recommended motion that from, uh, John Coughlin, um, town council. Um, I think again, just to sort of wrap it up, I do think that this is important because we, again, we are obligated to provide transportation and why this may not be the most comfortable way to do it. I mean, it is an obligation that the district has and this seems very commercially reasonable. Um, so I am, um, going to make the following motion to approve the purchase by the Town of Hingham School Department of a used 2008 GMC 20 passenger bus from Fleet First Inc. in the amount of $7,000, subject to and contingent upon a vote of the select board approving the filed disclosure by special municipal employee of a financial interest in a municipal contract as required under Master General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20D.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, Michelle?
I.
Jen?
Hi.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. And Ness is not participating in this vote.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else under 48 hours? Okay. Seeing nothing, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Um, make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second. Liza's second.
Okay. Okay. Um, and so all in favor, Michelle? Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hello.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
I.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned at eight 29 and thank you to everyone.
Thank you.